Fix that. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Oh, good. Make which. Okay, we added to our agenda under Shane B., Kids Trust Accounts and C., Final Payment ARPA. And then, under Luke Warren Schultz, we added Tribal Council salaries to those online who weren't able to hear us. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Shane is second by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes from July 2, 2024. We actually have three minutes to approve, so we'll do them each individually.
I have a question regarding the first meeting minutes. If you look on page 204, where it says moved by Travis Morrison, second by Shane Drift to approve authorization of BIA end-of-year fund request. Do we know where we're at with those?
The year of fund requests have been submitted to the BIA, but we have not heard anything from them. And that's if they just start to trickle in randomly, which ones they pick, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the meeting minutes for July 2? Do we have a motion to approve the July 2 meeting minutes? Moved to approve. Moved by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have July 16 meeting minutes.
Couple of things right out of the ban on the first page is that where we talked about the approval of the agenda with the addition of the SSB CI revisions and cannabis update. I think at the next meeting, I'd like to have Drew Ebert give the band members and also the council an update on the cannabis business and where we're at with that. And then also further down, where we talked about the hydration trailer. And I was asking questions as to who's going to be responsible for it, where is it going to be parked, and maintenance and all that. And far as I know, we still haven't received the answers to that.
I believe the hydration trailer is going to be housed in one of our garages, Kim. And then also with our emergency, is our emergency preparedness position?
The hydration trailer was table till we got those answers. And due to, then Teresa came on as the emergency preparedness person. And then we had some unplanned for events that Sadie was working on it. She had to be off. And they were going to get together and get those questions and re-present it to the council. We haven't done anything with it, so.
Okay. Can this be added to the next agenda, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
And then the last thing for me is when you look on page 2 of 2, where it says moved by Tara Giesek, second by Perry Drift to approve Conservation Code revisions with regard to aircraft and watercraft in Net Lake. And I think we need to draft up tough penalties for that. Like if another plane lands on a lake again, when we confiscate it, that we can basically hold it and sell it or raffle it off of you. So the people that land on a lake will have to buy their own plane back. I think, no, and Tajah's point, I think, is that, no, we need something written in place before for us to do that. And I think that we need to finish that, finish that process.
And if I could take that a little farther, you know, I think we need to do that. And also, I know we were working with law enforcement about if it ever comes to a point where we confiscate like cars or vehicles or something regarding crime on the reservation. And so that that might be another area that we might need to also look at. Because I know we were talking about it with law enforcement quite a while ago, but brings up another point, so. Okay.
Any questions on the July 16 meeting minutes? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve. Moved by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have August 7, 2024, meeting minutes.
I have a question for Kim. This is regarding page 2 of 2, where it says Kim Grant, CFO, gives a presentation on accounts receivable, ARPA funds, IHS funds, 105L lease funds. Now, with the new system also that the council, the other council members approved and the new software that we're getting, will we be able to accept payments like from credit cards?
Yes.
And because I know Ben has been asking for that.
Yes, it'll be, they'll be able to pay by credit cards, but they'll also be able to look at their account, their like utility account.
Uh huh. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the meeting minutes? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the August 7, 2024 meeting minutes.
I do have a couple of questions.
I thought you were gonna. I saw your finger on the button almost.
I did oppose Resolution 15-2025 adoption of the Boyceport leasing policy because it wasn't as direct. I don't consider it complete, you know, if we if we don't have what I think that should be in there, band member only. And I know we keep saying that there's band members that that lease our land anyway. But I just wanted to point out that I opposed that one and that we didn't, we didn't set any guidelines for when we may revisit that issue. All we said was, we're adopting it for now. So I'd like to know when we are going to take another good look at that. Or within the year, or I don't want us to be reactive. Only when something happens are we going to take a look at it. So I'd like to know that.
I think you bring up a good question, Tara, about follow-up. And just for everybody's information, we have had an assessment done of our leasing program. And that was done by Levi Brown, who actually works from the state of Minnesota through MinDOT. But Levi also has worked many years in Leech Lake with leasing. And so he came and worked with Lance, and he's going to be giving us a oral and written report on what he came across with regards to the leasing program. And I believe that might be a part of it, is when we do that assessment overview with Levi, then at that point, maybe we can set up some timelines.
I think even added that is that, you know, yes, it's not complete in my, is my understanding and talking with the manager of it, and that it's not complete. And we've still got to look at, you know, band members that are married to a non-band member and what happens with that process when, if the band member passes on and then what happens to the non-band member. And that if this does go through, is that one thing I would like to point out is that from this, from, let's say we planned it, if we post, if we approved it today, from this, from today on, no band members can have land on on Boyceport, if that's the way we want to go. But prior to that, if there's a non-band member that owns land already or leasing land, if you will, on it, then they should still be able to do just that. Because we can't just say, oh, okay, we passed this, now you got to get off. No, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if they live there their whole life and they contribute to the reservation and our people, then we've got to take that into consideration.
The life estates that we have in place now will, the life estates are, like Shane, you mentioned a non-Indian spouse. Right now, they do have the opportunity to stay in that property at the band member rate rather than going with the non-band member rate. So the life estates are in process. The other thing I think that you brought up too is that I know that, and I bring it up because at some point in time, I will no longer be on this earth, and I would love to have my grandchildren have my home. My grandchildren are not band members. And so, you know, it's a very touchy subject. But again, good discussion. Once we hear from Levi, we can set some timetables and get going to make this a complete document, if I could say it in that manner, so. Okay. If no other questions on the August 7, 2024, meeting minutes, do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have the consent agenda. I will read it. Approved authorization for chair to sign letter for requests for voluntary compliance agreement for FY 2023 audit, 400. Approved conservation committee appointments, 400. Approved contract with Native Strategies for feasibility study for second exit out of Net Lake, talking about a second road exit, 400. Approved contract with White Earth for FHPPAP program, 400. Approved contract with St. Louis County renewal for New Moon COC program, 400. Approved Resolution Number 19-2025 app submission for IHBG competitive grant to expand affordable housing for elders and handicapped individuals, 400. Approved Resolution Number 20-2025 app application submission for IRRR for food shelf expenses, 400. And that's the consent agenda. Any questions?
I just have a really quick one.
Okay.
And this would be for Teresa Drift. She's in, she's in the audience. $25,671 needs to be spent by 9:30 2024. How's that going? Sorry to call you, but it's very soon.
Hi. No problem. Yep, so $25,671 needs to be spent by the end of September. We did budget revision for our pay data changes so that we could cover the salary portion. And then we have folks ready to go to pay their, those amounts. So we should be, no problem to get that spent.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question. Now, with that, if some of the stuff doesn't work out, are you able to like re-class it? Whatever, however Kim uses that word, where you reclassify it, you take the money that's already been spent, and you take the funds that you currently have and say, well, we'll just go and do it this way?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Can you explain it, Kim? How, and you talk about the re-classing and all that, one accounting stuff?
You're referring to a grant closeout that we hadn't used up all the funds yet, basically. So like, in this situation, if they didn't have spent all the funds and there's, FHPPAP is a little bit more flexible, right? We could reclass salaries of people who worked on that that were charged to other spots, most likely like the third-party revenues from health that we haven't reported on. We can reclass that salary to expend it so we don't lose any of the funds.
That's exactly what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. If no other questions, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, next, we have Jane Lorenz for the presentation on the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative and proposed legal status. Good morning, Jane. Yep.
Okay. Good morning. Thanks for having me. I'm Jane Lorenz. I'm the Assistant Coordinator for the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative. And with me virtually is Christina Olson, who's the coordinator for the collaborative, and Joy Parker with the Jacobson Law Group. They'll be talking a little bit later on in the presentation. We recently presented to the Minnesota Indian Affairs Council on August 16, and Chairwoman Chavers asked us to come and present to all of you. So we were able to get on the agenda pretty quick before winter, so that was great. Anyway, if you want to go to the next slide, do you have the presentation up there, Nikki? Joy Parker and Christina Olson, and Olson was E.N. I think she's on there because I see the C.O. Yeah. Oh, you have to give them permission or something? Yeah. So if you want to go to the, yeah, there you go. Thanks. Or maybe, yeah, is there a slide before that? Yeah, that, don't, the first, yeah, go back one. There you go. Then one forward. There you go. Perfect, perfect. So the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative, this is the vision and mission statement up there, and I think you have the handouts for this presentation. Tribes in Minnesota have been working together for quite some time, nearly 20 years, on preventing and ending homelessness. They first came together to work on the Reservation Homeless Survey in 2006. And that was the first survey of its kind in the country to look at homelessness and near homelessness on reservations. Since then, it's been done six times. It was most recently done in October of 2023. In October of this year, the tribes in the collaborative will be meeting with Wilder to go through their data, how to understand it, how to use it, that type of thing. It's also been a model of how to respect tribal data sovereignty across the country. From that first experience working together, tribes then worked on plans to prevent and end homelessness, which were the first plans in the country for tribes. So that was a big deal. The tribes in Minnesota are lots of firsts on lots of things, so you'll be hearing that a lot through this. Then they came together and started working together. And if you want to go to the next slide, please, Nikki? Initially, we had, can you go to the next slide? Thanks. Initially, we had five tribes. We're stuck. Oh, there, there, no, there we go, that one. Perfect. So initially, we had five tribes, northern tribes in the collaborative, working together. They first took on state statute, changing state statute, so the two words would be added, and tribes. So tribes could be eligible to apply for funding. In 2018, Fond du Lac joined the collaborative. And then in late 2023 and early 2024, Graham Portage, Upper Sioux and Lower Sioux joined the collaborative. So now there's nine tribes in the collaborative, and we are having conversations with Prairie Island. Can you go to the next slide, please? So the current funding for the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative, we have some state dollars from Minnesota Housing for the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program. There's been a lot of money appropriated for that program in the last couple of years by the legislature. So I think right now, we're at somewhere between $3 and $5 million. I can't even tell you because it's been so many different pots of money. And that program probably takes up quite a bit of our time when it comes to reporting and data collection. We have two and a half staff that work for the collaborative, myself, Christina, and then we have a data coordinator. We also receive some money from Minnesota Housing for a regional planning grant that pays for the coordinator. We have a capacity building grant, and that is what is using to pay for the legal team to look at legal statuses for us. We do receive money from the Department of Human Services for the Long-Term Homeless Supportive Services Fund. That was the first pot of money that the Tribal Collaborative was successful in obtaining, is that was the first statute that they were able to get changed to add two words, and tribes. We also receive some state opioid response dollars, and we're asking for $2 million more over the biennium for the Long-Term Homeless Supportive Services Fund to bring on the three new tribes, fully bring them on into the collaborative. We did just receive, and this is a really big deal, through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, a $1.2 million grant with the Northwest Minnesota Foundation and the Northeast Continuum of Care. And this is to work on designing, planning, and implementing systems to prevent youth homelessness. And we heard yesterday from HUD, we were meeting with them, that this was the only proposal that had such a strong tribal presence with it. So this is a real big deal. We had a ceremony on June 6 in Bemidji where they gave us the great big check, you know, the publisher's clearinghouse check. So that was kind of a big deal. We're real excited about that, but there's a lot to learn. That's going to be a 30-month grant. And then if you can go to the next slide, please? Is it going? It's kind of slow today. There we go. So right now, and Joy will talk about this a little bit, we really don't have a legal status. And so we have, White Earth receives most of the state grants, and they serve as a fiscal agent. Red Lake Housing Authority has done this for the collaborative. And then we have a nonprofit in Minnesota that also will serve as our fiscal agent. They're actually serving as a fiscal agent for the HUD grant. So it adds this extra layer. It's not very efficient. It's not very, it's putting a burden on these other entities. And we would like to receive that funding ourselves. So we were able to get this grant to look into what our different options are. So I think we'll go to the next slide. Actually, you can even go to the next slide. And then we'll have Joy talk about the different options.
Hi, good morning. So there's a glitch, and I can't see the slides. Are we on Why Do We Need a Legal Status?
We're on the next one, the current MTC structure.
The one after that. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so the current MTC, well, yeah, I'll introduce myself, Joy Parker. Susan Allen is also here to support this presentation from Jacobson Law Group. So I'm not sure what, maybe if her mic and camera can be enabled so that she can feel free to chime in with her expert thoughts also. So the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative hired us to help explore legal status options, recognizing the need for them, as Jane said. And the current MTC structure is as an unincorporated instrumentality. So the Tribal Collaborative is made up of representatives from each of the participating nine tribes, including Boyceport, who have all signed memorandums of agreement. Each participating tribe authorizes a representative to the Tribal Collaborative. But as Jane mentioned, fiscal agents are needed, and there are some other downsides. They're not, there's, you know, unclear tax status, unclear sovereignty status. And so the collaborative had, is, was seeking a legal status that would really honor tribal sovereignty and that would allow more independence so that, and agility for focused function on providing housing and services. And so Susan and Chris and I here have been working on exploring and presenting different options for legal status. We can go to the next slide, which I think is tribally chartered corporation?
Yes.
Okay. So this is one option. A tribally chartered corporation can be operated as either a nonprofit or a for-profit, is governed by tribal law, uncertain federal income tax treatment, it takes a little work, is not considered a public entity, may not be eligible for federal funding opportunities available to tribal governments, in this case specifically HUD funding, may not have tribal sovereign immunity, and there's extra steps required to receive charitable contributions. Notably, as we understood from the collaborative, you know, a charter corporation would be, wouldn't lean into tribal sovereignty and wouldn't be an exercise of tribal sovereignty as clearly as a political subdivision would be, which we'll get to next. And it may not reduce the burdens currently experienced by the collaborative sufficiently. There's still, you know, as we know, a lot of decision-making with nonprofits and for-profit corporations, a lot of reporting on grants. And the funding that is so critical to the operation of the collaborative may not be available to nonprofits or even a, or even a for-profit tribally chartered corporation. So it's, there are some advantages. But in discussing, we are leaning into and hope to get But in discussing, we are leaning into and hope to get Boysport's support and all the other collaborative tribe support for political subdivision legal status. So we can go to that slide next. The big advantages of a political subdivision of tribal governments is being able to get funding straight from the federal and state government. So for IRS purposes, a political subdivision of a tribal consortium is treated as a state government, same as one, same as a tribe, under Section 7871. The requirement is that the political subdivision needs to perform essential tribal government functions. It's, you know, not, not a heavy lift to argue that providing housing and services is an essential government function. So we don't expect any trouble there. And as I mentioned, the huge advantage of a political subdivision is that it would share the same tax status and sovereign immunity as tribes while having the independence to waive sovereign immunity as needed for specific contracts, which we know is important to be able to do. So this political subdivision would be of the consortium of participating tribes of the collaborative. So it's, the structure is a little bit complicated, but essentially, the political subdivision would be governed by a board of nine commissioners. Each commissioner would be elected from, each commissioner would be elected from each participating tribe, so that's how we get to the number nine. And that allows for each tribe to have equal involvement. So as Jane mentioned, now, sometimes a tribe will serve as a fiscal agent, sometimes another nonprofit will serve as a fiscal agent for funding. With, as a political subdivision, each participating tribe would be participating equally. There wouldn't be this sort of lean towards a, towards a tribe that's serving as a fiscal agent, having maybe a little more say or some of the attention that can come up in that situation. Political subdivisions can receive public funding, and they can also receive tax deductible contributions without the 501(c)(3) reporting requirements. So that's, that's another big advantage. Federal funding can include federally guaranteed loans and tax exempt bond issuances, so it's pretty broad there. The disadvantage is that it requires, achieving the status requires Department of Interior approval and IRS approval. So it requires obtaining a private letter ruling from the IRS, which takes time and a lot of money. The grant funding for this project, this capacity building project, should cover that, so I don't, I don't think we're anticipating that being an issue. But it will take some time. So Jane and Christina just let us know that they got an extension on the grant through June because it will take some work to apply for that and then wait for the IRS to respond. Susan, do you have anything to add?
Just make one point is that the, the subdivision is going to be a political subdivision of the consortium. And so that, that would be the governing structure. And I think otherwise, you covered everything.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I've got quite a few questions. First one is to our attorney, Jeff. Are you online, Jeff?
Yep, I'm here.
Are there any legal concerns with this from, from our standpoint as a tribe?
You know, I think as, as Joy talks about the legal status, I think one of the most important things that comes to mind for me is, you know, that when you talk about the political subdivision waiving or having immunity and being able to waive it, I think one important thing is making sure that, you know, that doesn't mean that the political subdivision is waiving immunity for the tribe as a whole, or that that immunity waiver extends beyond the political subdivision. My understanding is that it would be, that, you know, any waiver of immunity needed for a contract or that was determined by the, by the board would be limited to the political subdivision and wouldn't extend to Boysport itself or other assets of Boysport. I guess Joy can confirm that that's accurate, but that is my understanding, and that would be a really important factor in this, a limiting factor. And, and so I think that's the biggest legal concern, and as long as we can confirm that, you know, a waiver wouldn't extend beyond the political subdivision, then, you know, I don't have any, I don't have any legal concerns.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Any waiver would be limited for its purpose, its specific purpose with the, you know, whatever contract is being pursued. And the tribe would be, all of the tribes, the tribal consortium would be protected, wouldn't be affected.
And that'll be set forth in the charter as well.
My next question is, you know, you're going to be seeking grant funding and all that, and with us being part of it, how does that play out? When you guys get a grant, are you guys going to oversee it? Or is the, the Boysport going to oversee part of it? And if you guys oversee it, then, Kim, how does this play out with indirect cost? Do we still need to pay something, or do we get something from it? How does that all work out?
So this is kind of in my head how I envision it. Right now, we, for, I'll take the example, the family homeless prevention dollars. White Earth receives that grant as a fiscal agent. Each tribe has a budget that they've decided on what works for them. Pretty much everything done with a collaborative right now is done by consensus. So we apply for the amount of money based on what everybody says they need for their budget. If we get that amount, great. If we don't get quite that amount, then we go back and we just discuss with everyone, do you want to take a cross-the-board cut? Do you want to give up more money so somebody else has money? It's always done by consensus, and we've never had any issues. We've actually added to the contract this year a provision where if a tribe can't spend all their money, it can go back to a different tribe in the, in the collaborative. And we can easily make it move around like that whenever we need. And we've done that with some of our grants, move money around. Each tribe does request indirect or admin dollars right now, and we're usually capped at that. FHPP has a cap of 10%, or is it 15% now? Is it 15% now? It just went up. So, but White Earth takes an admin portion, and so does each tribe in the collaborative. That wouldn't change at all, except that for that part that White Earth gets on top of what they do for their direct services, that would go to the collaborative to fund the staffing. Because right now, we're doing quite a bit of the work around the contracting, the data collection, the reporting, and everything like that. So that would help fund the staffing for the collaborative. But you would still get what you're getting right now. We just wouldn't have to have a middle person in there.
So with that, what you just explained then is that if we took, if we didn't take indirect cost and we would take admin, as you said, then how does that play out, Kim, for us as an organization?
She had mentioned they're capped at 15% currently, so we get it. So there's still a shortfall between that and our rate. But what she's, what the tribal collaborative would become is they would be a pass-through agency, just like the state of Minnesota. So we get a lot of our funds from the federal government that pass through the state. So this would kind of be a similar structure. And so we would be a sub-grantee to the collaborative, and then we would collect, you know, but, but they're capped already coming out of the gate, so they're not going to give us extra for indirect.
Right.
Well, then with that, you talked about the shortfall, that indirect cost and what they're capped at, and if we're having Dan's program oversee this and operate this, then would his department be able to cover that? Or would that have to be the tribal council?
It's a possibility, and that's, I do have indirect cost training scheduled for next week, and that's, I have the shortfall's total broke out for the whole reservation, for an example, and the portion that's HHS.
Okay. And then that leads me to my next question. With this, with this money and all this granting, would we be able to utilize it within our Duluth and Twin Cities urban office?
Yes. Right now, with the funding we have, we let each tribe decide where they want to use that money. And it's been everywhere, from anywhere in the state to within 10 miles of the reservation. Each tribe has different rules around that. I'm learning a lot through this whole process. For example, Upper and Lower Sioux have to keep it very tight within their reservation. It has to be on the reservation or within 10 miles. And that has to do with their per cap, too. So there's some different rules for them versus other folks. But we, we just leave that up to the tribes. We are talking, I was just talking with Dan before the meeting. We did just receive some more family homeless prevention dollars, and we're wondering about putting that down in the metro, hiring a couple of staff, and then any person who's American Indian could access that funding out of that office. What we know in Minnesota is if you're American Indian, you're more than 30 times more likely to be homeless than if you're non-Hispanic white persons. So we're trying to figure out some ways to address homelessness off reservations. As Dan mentioned, that we really do need to have the data to show, should that be in the metro area? Should that be in Duluth? Should that be in Virginia? What does our data really show where people are? And we might want to kind of play with that a little bit and see where that works best. So that's something we're talking about. In October, we're going to have Wilders coming down to our meeting, and they'll probably spend at least two hours with us going over our data. That's going to give us more of a picture of where the need is. They'll also be using the, the data that they collected from the statewide homeless survey, because they do ask person's race and their tribal affiliation. So we'll have that data to look at, too, to see where really is the need right now. I have a feeling for some northern tribes, it's more in the Duluth and Bemidji area. And then for some other tribes, it might be more in the metro. So we really want to get a feel for that. But it really is still and would always remain a tribe's individual decision.
Now, you're talking about the Lower Sioux, and the difference between us and the other reservations is that the other ones are us and Red Lake. The other reservations are public law too, we're not, you know, and does that play into it?
You know, at this point, it has not factored into anything we've been doing. It does, we talk about it sometimes at our meetings, and I need to learn myself more about it. But so far, it hasn't been a factor at all.
That's all I got.
I have a couple. You wanted legal status. Do you, I'm trying to figure out, when you apply for a grant, your, how, does it compete? When we're competing, how do we know if we're, you know, if you're applying and we're applying for that same thing? And how do we handle that?
At this point, I don't think we've had too much competition. We could have had some. We've been very careful about that. We don't want to compete with an individual tribe, so we always ask. We always try to find out. We do know for the pots of money we have right now, because we've come together as nine tribes, we've been able to access a lot more money than if each tribe was going after that funding individually. Because we can help with reporting, we can train on reporting, we can help with contracts, we can help with grant writing, that really relieves the pressure from each tribe to have to do all that individually. So we think we're more efficient and effective that way. We do believe we've gotten a lot more money because of that and working together. A couple of the grants, there's a priority if you either have a collaboration of counties or tribes. So in that respect, an individual tribe wouldn't even be competitive. So in those cases, we've been able to get a lot more money. But we are very careful about that. We do not want to compete with a tribe, so we try to always ask about that. We meet a lot with state partners, so we hear about things before RFPs come out, so then we have time to, to talk to individual tribes.
Sounds like a lot of money. Okay, for your nine commissioners, how are you selecting them? And, or has that already been done?
No, and maybe, Joy, my thought is that that would be, each council would have to appoint that or vote on that person?
Yeah, each tribe would appoint, would elect that commissioner. As the draft, we're working on the draft charter, and as it is now, each, a commissioner would be elected from each tribe and would serve for one-year terms. And then with ultimate approval and power by the, by the collaborative to discharge, you know, a commissioner from that position if needed.
Okay, so your extension is till June 2025, right? Is that just for the current grant that you have now? Did you apply for an extension, or how? And then after June 2025, then it'll be annual? You're just going to keep going with this? Or you, are we totally ending on June 2025?
So the, the June 2025 is for a capacity building grant to have Joy, Susan, Jacobson Law, to work with us on this very specific purpose. Unfortunately, all of our grants have different end dates and start dates, so I could probably write a long chart for you, but they're all ending and starting at different days and times. So, for example, you heard about the $25,006.71 that ends September 30th. But the majority of that money ends September 30th of next year. You know, the Long Term Homeless Supportive Services Grant, we're hoping to get a one-year extension on that. That will start January 1st. So, you know, the HUD grant, they're hoping to have the contract in place by October 1st. So all of these grants have different start and end dates. That could be a whole meeting in itself discussing that.
Okay, so I, I understand now. So you'll give us some guidance on who to select for your, for the commissioner? I'm not sure if it's homeless or what, how we're, you know, how we're going to go ahead and select that. But also, once this gets going, one-year terms. I'm just thinking, how, you, you said that you're going to do some reporting back to the agency, the funding agency, but what kind of reports are you going to give back to the individual tribe? Because I'd like to know, out of the nine, nine tribes, you know, how much you're going to help Boysport? I want to see, you know, I want to see how much that is helpful for Boysport, how many people in Boysport, band members that you did help.
And that's something I'd like to see us get together is reports that staff could bring to their councils, you know, at least annually of, these were the sources of funding, this is who it was for, this is how many people were helped, this is how much money came back into the Boysport community. We have not quite gotten to that part, point yet, but I'm hoping in the next year, we can get to that point. I mean, I'm sure Teresa and Sarah and Dan could whip off some numbers for you quickly, but we'd like to have something that was standardized for every tribe so you could review that easily and see the money that's coming back. There's quite a bit of money right now for homeless prevention particularly. And then, of course, this youth homeless grant will be a big one, too, because each tribe is going to get the same amount. They're going to be working on planning, and they're going to be bringing youth on to help them with this planning process.
Okay, so you're asking for a fiscal agent. Are you asking Boysport to be the fiscal agent, or what's, or one of the nine?
No, we are, we are just asking for you to hear this out, like you did today. And then if you think this is something you can support, we'd like your support to get a political subdivision. We are hoping, then, that nobody has to serve as a fiscal agent because the collaborative will be able to be its own fiscal agent. So then we don't have to do this bouncing around, and I don't have to beg people to do that work.
So, so the commissioner from each tribe will, will serve on the board that governs the political subdivision, if that makes sense. The next steps in this process of forming the little legal status will be doing like we're doing today, answering questions and presenting to tribal councils. And then hopefully soon, we'll get some draft resolution language for you and ask for approval of a resolution to form, to take, you know, file the, begin the actual legal filings that we need to, to form the political subdivision. After it's formed is when commissioners would be appointed by each tribe. And in, as the charter, the draft charter says now, it's just that the tribe appoints its commissioner. And so I think that probably would be up to tribal council if that comes from a council appointment or if it comes from your, you know, housing authority. That, I think there's some discretion there for each tribe to designate their commissioner to the political subdivision. And that's further down the road. We don't need any decisions about that now.
Okay. And then I'm glad to hear, and I'm glad Jeff spoke up about the limited waiving of immunity, because, boy, did my ears perk up as soon as I heard that. Oh, no, no, I just thought right away, I was right away thinking that, so. I'm glad he straightened that out. And capped at 15% for IDC? Eh, you know, I don't quite like that, but why is it at 15%? Can you tell me why?
That's, each state agency decides that. We advocated strongly to have it raised from We advocated strongly to have it raised from 10% to 15%. There's some state grants that are 5%. Having worked at the state for 14 years before I retired in 2019 to do this, I, it is really quite random. I hate to say that, but it really is.
Yeah, well, the state can afford that, tribes can't.
Right, exactly.
Or Boysfort can't.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, Jane, would a letter of support help with regards to the, going with the legal status that you're looking for, or what, how can we help you before we need that resolution?
What do you think, Joy?
Well, I think, Jane and Christina, that's up to you, and you already have, you know, relationships between the tribes on the collaborative. As we're going around and, you know, gaining support from each tribe, and ultimately formal support in the form of a resolution, do you think a letter would help from Boysfort in that process? Or is there already pretty broad support, and we don't need to burden the council with that extra work?
Christina, what do you think?
I would think we wouldn't need the letters of support. I think just, just for the council, just to be aware that that resolution might come through if we get support of all nine tribes within the next, we're hoping to do that within the next couple of months, right? Right, Jane and Joy?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
It sounds like we don't need it right now.
Right. But if you're out and about talking with other tribal council members and chairs, please feel free to say that this is a great idea and you really support it. That would help.
What is your timeline with regards to trying to get this political subdivision accomplished?
I would like to get it into the Department of Interior as soon as possible, because I understand that is going to be a process. And I'm worried about the election, so, because I think right now, the Department of Interior, in my opinion, would be friendly towards this. I don't know how that could change depending on the election. So, that's kind of where my worry is, where if we can get this in, like in December or January, that might help. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think we're aiming for the end of the year, and Susan, I don't know if you can add anything in your experience on waiting for IRS letters of private letter rulings from the IRS? I think that takes several months.
Right, I think we can focus on getting the BIA approval. The IRS will require that before we can submit the request for a private letter ruling. So, we're working on that right now, the letter to the BIA. So, when we get to the point where we have full support from councils, then we can submit that to the BIA. But yeah, it can take months, up to, you know, eight months for IRS to act on applications, but hopefully, it's on the shorter end.
We can do a motion to approve supporting you guys in regards to your, trying to obtain a political subdivision for the collaborative, if that will help, and then we can get the resolution. Once you get those processes done, bring the, bring it back for the resolution.
And I think, to add on to that too, is that, you know, once this grant, this money's received, what's the game plan on our end? Who's going to, who's going to, are we going to hire another staff person? Is it going to go to New Moon, or where's it going to go?
I think that's going to be up for you all to decide that yourselves. Every tribe does it different, and we, I don't think we'd want to dictate that to you. You can decide.
I think I would.
And I just had a comment. A lot of the funding that we get will be the same funding that's running through Dan's program right now, so it might, you know, it might stay with Dan and Teresa and their programs. It just won't have to go through another tribe or another entity for, and then do sub grant contracts. It'll just come through the collaborative instead.
But we need some guidance on who to select, and what you need, and what would be the proper credentials, or, I don't know, education, or how you want, who is the best?
Would it be helpful to put together like a, maybe a job description or a position description about?
Yes.
What we would need for, you know, because I could envision somebody who's passionate about housing and homelessness, and somebody who has the time to attend meetings and is interested in this funding.
And then we also have to determine if it's, if we can have this person on or off reservation, that type of thing. Does it have to be, does this person have to be fully immersed in our grants, so that you work collaboratively? Or could it be somebody from the community that's off reservation, that is a Boysfort band member, that has knowledge in homelessness and housing? So, that's what we need to know, is so we can narrow that down, not just select somebody. That's what we're asking.
I think it should be you. But we do need somebody with some passion about this, and I think it's really going to be up to each tribe to decide who that could be. But, we could put together a kind of a job description, or, you know, kind of the desired qualities for the position, if that would help, yeah.
Yes, that would help. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just one last question, is that, you know, without grants, and we have the reporting, and you have the year-end wrap-up and all that, and then if something should happen where there's questionable stuff within the grant, or they're not happy with how things went, and then will that reflect on us as a tribe? Because we're part of this.
You know, we've had kind of some ups and downs with reportings with some tribes following through. I think the one thing the collaborative does really well is talk things through and try to work things through with everybody, try to come to a resolution that makes sense. We don't want anyone to lose face or feel ashamed about something. We want everyone to continue to do their good work. It's a very collaborative group of people. They really like to be with each other, so I feel like it's a lot of friends working together on a project. I, I mean, I don't know if Dan and Sarah, Teresa want to say anything, because they attend the meetings, but.
Or Carol, yeah.
Come up next to me, my dear.
Sorry, Carol.
No, I think what Shane is asking about is if you're reporting and something starts looking bad, you know, like they're going to violate you because something's not getting done, or whatever, how will that reflect on the tribes?
Yeah.
Because if even the tribes are late, they won't fund us sometimes?
Right.
So, we need to keep our, our good name.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. Well, and I think where that's, where some of the immunity, sovereign immunity would be with just the tribal collaborative, and we would want to make sure it didn't reflect poorly on the other, on all the tribes that are part of the collaborative. We are held really to account by our collaborative. We have a chairwoman who is very on top of things, Tammy Morland from Malax. I don't know, Christina, what do you think?
So, at each tribal collaborative meeting, we go over all of our grants, where everybody's at for spending, what they need to spend. So, we're pretty close, we're pretty on top of that every meeting. I mean, we, we meet once a month, and then if, for instance, somebody isn't spending their money, you know, we just made a, Jane just did our sub grantee contract, where we're able to move funding from a tribe if they feel like they can't spend it, or how that's going. Yeah, we don't, we don't want anybody to be penalized for not spending their money. We try to work with everybody, and we wouldn't want that to reflect bad on any tribe. Right now, White Earth holds all the, I worked for White Earth for 29 years, and White Earth was the fiscal agent for many years, for, well, pretty much the last couple of years we've been getting grants, Jane.
10 years, probably? Yeah.
10 years. So, so I've seen situations where some tribes weren't spending, and, you know, we try to work with them, and the last thing we want to do is take money away from a tribe and reallocate it to another tribe. But if that's what had to happen, I mean, obviously, we work through it, just so we're not in bad with the state or federal. This, our first federal grant that we're getting is from the youth grant, but I mean, with the state. And the state's usually pretty, they work with us a lot too, so they've been really good to work with through the homeless grants. So, I would say like, we would just be on top of it, where we hope that it wouldn't affect any tribe from applying for funding. I hope I said that right.
Yeah. I mean, we have probably phone conversations and email exchanges with every single tribe several times a week. So, we are in constant contact with everybody on everything, reporting, different cases, can we spend money on this? And so, we have constant contact with everybody.
Can I ask one more question? So, if you're a political subdivision, and I'm not, I don't understand that right now, I'd have to look into it, but tribes sometimes cannot apply for specific funding because we're not eligible. Is that going to affect you? Or are you guys still open to apply for our funding, or funding we would be eligible for, and then the funding we're not?
We submitted these two options to HUD, because that's the federal funding we'd be most likely to go after, probably also Health and Human Services. And we, according to what we were told, is both of these options would work for HUD. We would not want to directly compete with any funding that you get, like Nahas or anything like that, so we would want to keep that separate. It would be more the HUD continuum of care dollars that are for homeless programming. So, but they've said so far, this looks good. But it's a good question.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, can I call for a motion to support the Minnesota Tribal Collaborative in their efforts to become a political subdivision?
All motion.
Motion by Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Silent. Motion carried. McGwich.
Thank you.
Thank you.
McGwich up, ladies.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Mr. Bob Degross from the Voyagers National Park to do a, present the co-stewardship opportunity and seek concurrence from council. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. How are you all doing? Thank you for your time today. As you were saying, Chair Chavers, my name is Bob Degross. I'm the superintendent at Voyagers National Park, a unit of the United States National Park Service within the Department of Interior. Just for background, Voyagers National Park is about 218,000 acres of lands and waters that extend from International Falls in the Northwest, down to Crane Lake in the Southeast. And right now, we have some substantial support to enter into co-stewardship planning and agreement with the affiliated nations to Voyagers National Park. I brought a packet of information. I apologize, I will send that to either Nikki or Regina electronically as well. The first topic that I want to talk about is the co-stewardship effort, and the briefing statement for that is on the right side of that folder that you have. It's a one-page document, and it says briefing statement on the top. Matter of fact, in late August, the director, or the director of the National Park Service, Chuck Sams, came here and had the opportunity to meet with Chair Chavers and Councilman Moyer and some others, and to talk about this co-stewardship opportunity. But we do have this substantial support from the National Park Foundation and the Doris Duke Foundation to work with the affiliated nations to Voyagers National Park to really develop a meaningful collaborative co-stewardship planning document over the next several years and everything. Not only is Boysfort obviously the primary affiliated nation, since the lands and waters of the park are on the ceded lands of the Boysfort from the 1866 treaty, we also have 17 other federally recognized tribal nations that are affiliated with Voyagers National Park as well, including two, seven additional Canadian First Nations on the Canadian side that are very closely associated with Rainy Lake, for a total of 25 affiliated nations to the park and everything. So, what we're aiming to do with this substantial support is to, over the next couple of years, facilitate a number of workshops where we bring in as many of the nations that are interested in being part of this opportunity, to have a discussion about what are the things that they, the different nations would like to see, you know, closely working with and, and everything. So, through this, the, the support that we have at the moment is about $1.7 million. That funding is primarily going to be used to hire two primary facilitators to assist us in this process. We've already hired one through the Voyagers Conservancy. I'm hoping to hire another facilitator, basically liaison, that would either be through working with the Boysfort or another affiliated nation to help us through this process. And then also, funding will be used to fairly compensate anyone who's being involved in the process, any of the tribal nation members who are going to be participating in the process. And then also, hopefully, having the funding available, so that after we develop our plan over a period of time, we can actually start to implement some of the main working focuses that are identified in the plan. So, primarily in that effort, what I'm seeking today is really just concurrence from the council, for me as the superintendent of the National Park, to go out to the other affiliated nations and start informing them of this opportunity and everything. Because of course, I don't want to do that until I get concurrence from the Boysfort and everything, so.
McGwich, Bob, it was an interesting meeting, and we actually had two individuals from the First Nations from Canada that attended the meeting as well, which was very nice to see, our relatives from the North. You mentioned funding and whatever. I just want to mention that the Voyagers National Park was awarded financial support from the Doris Duke Foundation in the amount of $700,000, and the National Park Foundation of $1 million. So, it's a $1.7 million project. And I see that by October, you want to, by the end of October, you want to do a formal announcement to all the 25 affiliated tribal nations about this co-stewardship planning process. It's very nice to see, and I know that the director of the National Park Service, Chuck Sams, added Voyagers National Park to the list of possible programs to get funding, and it was really surprising that Voyagers was picked, so I want to say Chief McGwich to Director Sams for that. Because there is a lot of history and a lot of history and culture and knowledge that our First Nations and even our tribes here in Minnesota have with regards to the whole, the whole area, the whole state, the whole part of Canada as well. So, it would be nice, I like this, and I like the idea of getting everybody together to, to try to come up with a plan on, on how to, how to bring our stories to life. So, you guys have some questions for Mr. Degross?
Yeah.
I have a few questions. You said you already selected a primary facilitator or liaison. Would you be able to share who that is?
Yeah, that's Larissa Jip, and she is working with the Voyagers Conservancy currently. She's been actually one of our liaisons in collaboration with the Voyagers Conservancy to have dialogue with the Boysfort about our education program, to assure that our, our curriculum-based education program is thoughtful of considerations from the Boysfort community. Matter of fact, we had some listening sessions over the last four months or so and everything. So, Larissa is going to transition from her current education specialist position into the, one of the liaison positions and things, so.
Okay, is she a tribal member of any?
She is not a tribal member of the Boysfort. She is a tribal member of a nation in Michigan, which I apologize, I forget the name of that nation at the moment. She is working, or she's going to be starting to work in the 1854 Treaty Authority and at the Fond du Lac College here within the next couple of months, if I'm not mistaken and everything.
Okay.
With the second, I would say with the second one, I would really like to work with the Boysfort to see if we can find a Boysfort tribal member who would like to take that opportunity and position and everything.
That was going to be my recommendation.
Yeah.
Could you tell I was leading up to that?
Yeah, no, but great minds, right? Yeah.
So, that's what I would, would like.
Yeah. I know, and I'll be very, you know, I very much like to do that. I know that everyone in the northern Minnesota area seems to have challenges with finding, staffing, and everything like that. But this is a unique opportunity that I think is going to really draw the attention of a unique individual who wants to really be part of this, this process and everything, so, yeah.
Okay. Is there, can, can we, Boysfort, require that, or should we only highly recommend? I really think that that needs to happen.
We could actually do it in the point where We could actually do it in the point where, you know, the person would be hired by the Boyce Fort, we would just transfer the funds to you, and then it would be co-supervised or co-led between the Boyce Fort and the Park Service and everything, if that was something you all were interested in.
Okay.
Otherwise, I know the hiring might be done through the Voyagers Conservancy and everything, but targeted to the Boyce Fort community and everything.
Okay. Those are the comments that I have.
Something I'd like to mention is that I've been pushing this for a while now regarding the 1866 Treaty area, which where this park sits, is that unlike the 1854 Treaty, the 1866 Treaty didn't establish our treaty rights on one end, but on the flip side, it didn't take them away either. So basically, there's, they're sitting in limbo. And that's why I keep pushing us as a tribal council that we need to start working on that to get them established. And, and I posted that on my group page time and again about a book on Stephen Alpevoir, how he talks about treaty rights that aren't established, they're there. And that we need to work with the agency that I told you guys about and to start getting those established. And I'd like to see if we can work on it before the election is done, because it's kind of worrisome if it goes the other way, I think we probably have to kiss those treaty rights goodbye. But with this thing, I think it's, it's a good idea, I like it. And I like how the Voyager National Park is reaching out to Boyce Fort. With this treaty area, if Boyce Fort didn't sign it, we'd probably be part of Canada. And just like the 1854 Treaty, if we didn't sign that, if our people didn't sign that, we'd be part of Canada. And by signing the 1854 Treaty, we helped shape not only America, but Minnesota as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and at our meeting, just for your information, Perry, not Perry, I mean, sorry, Jalen and Ryan from the school were also at the meeting, because, you know, they were interested as well. And I like the idea of a Boyce Fort band member in this, in the other tribal, like a tribal liaison position, because it is in the 1866 Treaty area. And I just look forward to this program because it, and again, you came to us with it, and I just think it's a good idea to do this. And I know you have a, an agreement with Grand Portage as well.
Yeah, so that's another topic that I wanted to discuss, or at least broach today, and provide the documentation. And I will probably come back to the October Tribal Council meeting to discuss in greater detail. But with self-determination, the National Park Service has the opportunity to work with tribal nations to undertake inherently governmental functions, as you're probably aware. Right now, we are primarily working with the Grand Portage under the Grand Portage National Monument Funding Agreement. And we work with the Grand Portage to undertake some contracting and purchasing type of things. Of course, with the transfer of the funding that takes place, there's a percentage that is retained for fiscal agent management. And then also, if all the funding is not used, the funds revert to the nation as well and everything. So this is the funding agreement between the Grand Portage National Monument and the Grand Portage Band. And then I added as two more documents behind that agreement, some of the amendment changes that Voyagers National Park specifically requested to work with the band, to show you some of the projects that we work with the band on, with the Grand Portage and everything. And so one of my requests that I'll just sort of put on the table here is, is the Boyce Fort interested in entering into a financial agreement with us so that we do this work with you all rather than the Grand Portage? And the Grand Portage is very interested in making sure that you all either do or do not want to enter into an agreement like that with us and everything.
Great. Sounds really good, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Bob?
Yes. Do you have any photos of any Boyce Fort band members hunting, fishing, gathering after the treaty was signed?
I would have to check our, our archives and everything. I do know that we have a variety of different, definitely gathering. I don't know about hunting, but plant gathering, wild rice gathering, I'm almost positive that we do have photos of that, those activities. And I will check our archives to make sure and find those for you.
If you could send that to us as a tribal council, that'd be great, because where I'm going with this is that this will clearly demonstrate that our people understood that we would continue to be able to hunt, fish and gather within this treaty area that surrounds Boyce Fort as a whole here, up into Canada, at the border there. And that, I keep pointing this out, is that our people were hunting and fishing and gathering long before this was even a treaty area. And they continued to do so after the treaty was signed. So that's how they understood it.
Yeah, I think most of our photos, if I remember correctly, are probably from the 1930s and 19, maybe the 20s up into the 40s and everything. So I'll see what we have, yeah. And send them electronically, probably.
Thank you.
Where exactly is that?
Our, our.
Our archives and stuff.
So we are, we're headquartered in International Falls, and our archives and museum collection is up there. And I know Jalen is very familiar with our archives and, and museum collection.
Any other questions or comments for Bob? If not, do I have a motion to approve entering or becoming a part of the co-stewardship opportunity with the National Park Service?
I approve so long it doesn't infringe upon our sovereignty.
Okay, motion by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Migwich.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Yep, see you again.
Yep.
Okay, next we have Nikki Irving with the Coda Ethics Committee Appointments.
Yeah, you, you should have the list in front of you, if you guys were able to look through it beforehand. It's just a matter of, we go through this every two years now. 2022 was the first time we had appointees. But you'll have to select six as members and four alternates. And it's just all by majority vote, however you guys want to do that.
Hang on, I'm trying to get organized here. Okay, so we need six people picked, and what else, Nikki?
Four alternates.
Four alternates.
Six serving, four alternates.
Yep.
Question, these terms, how long are they, they're only two years?
Two years, yeah.
So we do this every two years?
Yes.
And we select a whole group of 10, not staggered terms at all? Okay.
Okay.
There's a question here, it says Teresa Drift, Duluth.
Not this Teresa Drift, Terry, I think she was Terry Hill.
Okay.
Okay, council, let's see. All right. If you guys have any preference, or go right ahead.
Well, that's what I was just going to ask, is that we each, each going to pick one and then, actually, we each pick two because we're picking 10, right?
Yeah. However you guys want to do it, do you guys?
One more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Will these be virtually for the majority of the meetings? Is that why we have a lot of off reservation? And I think that's a really good idea.
Yep.
Yeah, just for everybody's information, some of the committees now that we're posting for, like even the Revitalization Committee, we're looking for band members off the reservation due to the technology capabilities now of having meetings on Teams or Zoom or whatever. So we really want to get our band membership involved off the reservation as well. So you'll see coming up on a lot of, some of the committees, that there's people from out of state, so.
I just want to point out too that once you guys do appoint the members, I'll work with Jeff to set up a training with them to go over the, the process.
Migwich.
I know I said one question, but I, one more.
One more.
And then I quit. What about compensation? Are they received any compensation, or is this purely voluntary?
Purely voluntary, and we put that on the notice.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Oh, okay.
I would like to select and nominate Vicky Hackey from Tower, Minnesota, for a serving spot on the committee.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Vicky Hackey? Move by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay. Who's next? Perry?
I would like to nominate Shannon Gishick. I think she's a band member located down in the Twin Cities area.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Shannon Gishick?
Move.
Move by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried.
Can I, can I jump in here real quick?
No.
No, just kidding. When we are selecting somebody, isn't that the, you know, I'm moved to? Should we do that instead of moving and then second and third? No? Because I, I, that's what I was thinking was, here, let's try it out the way I want to do it.
Okay, Shane, if you want, oh, go ahead.
I motion to select Jalen Strong for a serving seat on the board.
Okay, Tara, motion to approve Jalen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, Shane, motion to approve whoever you want.
I move to approve Sidra Eves.
Okay. Is there a second for Sidra? Eves.
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Do you want to do a second one, Shane? And then we'll come back to Perry can do a second one. Yeah.
I will nominate Linda Thompson from Savage.
Okay, motion by Shane to have Linda Thompson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Perry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, Perry, do you have another one you'd like to select? Okay, do you want to think about it for a while? Okay, Robert?
Well, we got.
Stepping on your toes, sorry.
Well, even Shane, I was thinking, sit here. I don't know if it'd be much of a, anything, but with Jeffrey Mattson being Vicky's grandson, would that, you know, I would like to nominate Jeff.
Okay, Robert nominates Jeff Mattson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. We're at six. Okay, we need four more. There's a lot of good ones, aren't there?
Elena Sherman would be, I'd like to nominate.
Alana, Elena, sorry, Sherman. Motion by Robert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Elena?
Elena.
Sherman. I guess I'd like to nominate Joanna Boyer. Motion, I can't, oh, I can't move.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
Move.
Move by Shane for Joanna, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, oh, wait, now who's second? We need a second, sorry, I'm getting confused here.
I'll second.
Second by Perry, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Do you have another one, Perry? Off the list? Oh, show me your list. Okay, Perry goes with Tanisha Dupree. A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, one more.
I'd like to nominate somebody. Oh, do you get two? Hey! You're the chair.
I know, but they do the motion. I would like to nominate Rena Devillade. Do we have a motion to that?
Move.
Move by Shane.
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, there we go. That's done. Next. Thank you, council. Next we have.
Did you get all that? Did you get all that?
We did the serving first and then the last one? Or do we have to, because I said the ones that I want to serve.
I think we can, we can, let's meet after this and figure out who the serving and, okay. Next we have Darlene Johnson with Resolution 21-2025 Contract with Docks on Wheels Authorizing Use of ARPA SLFRF Funds for Purchase and Installation of Docks at Vermilion and Indian Point. And we also have Resolution 22-2025 Authorizing Use of ARPA SLFRF Funds for Installation of Electric Utility Infrastructure to Support Band's New Maintenance Garage and Food Shelf Facility in Vermilion. That was a lot. Good morning, Darlene.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, then. Um, yeah, Docks on Wheels at Vermilion and Indian Point, we're going through Docks on Wheels out of Ely, I believe they are. And there'll be four that are going at Vermilion and one on Indian Point.
And the amount is $24,117 for advanced payment, but the total amount is 48?
Seventy, no, $72,352.
Seventy-two, where is that?
What page is that?
I don't know, I'm trying to find it. I found the 48 and.
And we got a discount? Doris worked with them and we got a discount?
Yep, I got it. Boyce Fort shall pay contractor, it's on page, I don't know what, two.
Page numbers.
The $72,352 with the first payment being an advance payment of 24, 117, and then the last, the last payment of 48, 235, which makes the total 72,352.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Um, any questions? This is for four docks at Vermillion and one dock at Indian Point.
Yes.
Okay. And they'll be in, will they be brought in this year or next?
I'm, my, I believe that because it's, was a time thing, I believe they will do it next spring, but I will check with them for sure.
Okay, thank you. Oh, does it end spring?
Says could, could be end of October twenty-four, but would be better served to wait until spring.
Okay, springtime then, okay.
Thanks Robert.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 21 dash 2025? Moved by Robert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, Resolution 22 dash 2025, there you go ma'am.
This one is for Lake Country Power to, and you stated it quite well, install new or relocate electric for Public Works Food Shelf in Vermillion. And that cost is forty-four thousand eight twenty-six and seventy-one cents.
That amount is shocking.
Oh, I'm like Shane, what are you talking about? I'm gonna sprint right over my head today.
Oh my goodness, okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 22 dash 2025?
Ooh.
Second.
Motion by Shane, second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, silent, motion carried, okay, let's move on.
Thank you council.
Thank you Darlene, good job. Good morning Kim Greiner. We have uh quite a few things here for you, been a busy lady. We have Resolution 23 dash 2025, authorizing allocation of ARPA SLFRF funds for government services expenditures from FY twenty-two to present.
Okay, uh, we've talked about this a couple of times. Explaining the concept, so uh, I passed around right about um the balance of the ARPA funds.
Okay.
And we had the vote yesterday. And then um, the second thing I'm stepping around is Exhibit A.
Exhibit A is the second thing I'm putting out. I didn't turn my mic on, thanks for the people in the audience for saying so. So uh, the first thing I handed out for those that didn't hear was the balance of the um ARPA funds, the SRF funds, and um the detail, which is Exhibit A for this resolution. So, this is a government services resolution and um because of timeframes, we are working with uh to make sure things are taken care of properly, um and that we don't lose any funds through the process. So, I, I went through um the ARPA budget again. And um, there's five projects that have already been approved that um we have resolutions on. But if something happens between now and December of twenty-sixth, we might not be able to spend those funds. So part of this helped with that problem, and then there's part that's totally unbudgeted yet. And that way we can give um, cause we got a new mix of council, an opportunity to, you know, the council, the new council, to reprioritize and decide um what they, they want to do. And it's been challenging to um establish meetings because you're also in the consultation session with the state, so um everybody's time is uh really stretched. So um, the five projects that um we're talking about that you've already approved, that um something might happen between now is a position of an IT engineer, um a position of a project manager, the position of the energy assistance um program, and the energy department. Now those all four have positions in there, and if something, it's not a hundred percent clear what would happen, what the treasury would do is let's say one of them separated employment between now and December twenty-sixth. So by, um, I'll explain more, and then we have, um, we've, from early on, we have one point eight, over one point eight million budgeted as a grant match for um an elder housing. I have that highlighted because I have a question about that, um, you did another resolution, and I believe the match went up by um a million dollars. Is that correct? So do you want to change that match to match the resolution? Cause that would reduce the unbudgeted, the remaining budget, you know, that is unbudgeted.
Kim, uh, yesterday the council had a discussion with Jeff about the general services um resolution, and it's my understanding, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the reason for the general services resolution is um other tribes have gone this avenue to ensure that they don't send any money back to the treasury. What Kim is talking about with uh some of these positions is if, if we keep them as is right now, and let's say they're under the ARPA structure, if they, if we um have positions that maybe they vacated a couple positions out of those ARPA um funds, that if we can't fill those positions and there's money left over, that money would go back to the treasury. And that's one thing we want to not have happen. So in talking with Jeff yesterday, we were talking about just coming up with a general services um resolution that doesn't really define what the money's being used for, but just in general, taking it and putting it into, into general government services. And then determining later what those amounts will be. So I would say um, when you asked the question about the elderly housing, yes, we did apply for that, but we won't know about that till December. And so if we, if we obligate that there, um, you know, so that we're just, it's just, it's really difficult to do this process.
Yeah, it is, um, and so I was just trying to um give some background so people understood a little bit more. So the five projects as they are, without talking about the extra match, um those five projects is about three point three million, I'm just gonna round off for um yeah, um discussion purposes. And it leaves about three point five, almost three point six unbudgeted at this time. So um, we would have to find um general government services expenses that we would reallocate. And that's, and that comes to six point nine million dollars, a little over six point nine million dollars. And that's what Exhibit A is that I handed out? Well, that's because there's detail on the, I know, because it, um, I was working from home yesterday cause I had appointments and.
I can see it.
But uh, at the, um, so I had selected the programs that um we had done. And what would, what would happen is, is we would um fund those programs from twenty-two through, um, I have it figured out through August of twenty-four. We would fund those programs, and then the funding that we had used to fund those programs would be put, and I had just made it, called it um tribal ARPA dollars, so it's in a particular spot and not mixed in and just kind of um washes, you know, gets used up. Um, and I would suggest using the same process of, we would still do a resolution, present it, you know, stuff like that, so it's all, all doing it. And then the, the biggest thing that this is getting rid of is having contracts signed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and projects finished by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And so if um, like, let's say one of the positions, if someone um for some reason separated employment, um, and we reapply, um, cause we had it figured out for a certain timeframe, that we could fill it and it could go beyond that date, if the council chooses, you know. It gives a little more flexibility and um, and does this for, for that. There's still some fun, some projects that I need to answer, get answers on, and um, this is, excuse me, assuming that all current approved projects that are currently in the SRF fund, get their contracts signed and executed before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So out of all the ARPA funding that we received, we, we have until twenty twenty-four to obligate it, which is what we're trying to do here today. And then also um, uh, this amount is, the unobligated amount right now is three point five million?
That's, that's what we haven't selected projects for, yeah, basically.
So three million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Yes.
That would be the general services.
Any projects assigned to it.
Yeah, I gotta. Really quick, um, you said that the match went up for the elder housing? And it says one point eight, six-three, you know?
Yeah.
Does that mean it went up upon that figure, or that's the figure?
No, um, I think it went up as far as uh general conversations with Carol. I think they applied for that on Fri- Thursday or Friday and just be everybody's schedule. I was out of the office yesterday, so I just don't have a final number.
So the application was submitted on Thursday evening, and it was successfully submitted. Um, the price and the cost of construction has gone up, it's still going up. So when we did the uh reevaluation of the cost of building these sixteen units, it went up to two point eight million. So that's why we needed, um, that's why it went up, because of construction costs. We did apply for five million from HUD. So.
Two point eight million is the match.
Yep.
Yeah, and then this five million would, is the application that went to HUD. So the seven point eight million.
And when we were talking about this before, and that's the one thing I raised is that, that what happens when this increases again? And remember we were sitting upstairs and we're talking about these projects, and it's like, every time we start to do something, and then they, they saw the inflation and everything goes up, and now what happens if we, if we allocate this and say approve it, and then they come back, so it increased again? Then what?
Then we have to seek funding elsewhere, or uh, yeah, or cut down the size of the project.
Yeah, you can value engineer it, so you would downsize the project, um, maybe not have certain things in the project that were in there now. Because the project is gonna, is planned to be one and two bedroom units. Possibility if the construction costs go up, we might need to just make them all one bedroom to make it fit into that budget. Unless there's another grant out there that we come across, which I'm continually looking, we could apply for additional money for that, just on the safe side.
I just wanna add out, you know, I've, since I've come on recently, I've been noticing projects, you know, that are quoted at a few million, and then they, they end up ballooning. You know, that needs to stop, that needs to stop. I understand inflation, building costs change, but the research needs to be sounded, it needs to be done. We, this, 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 this ballooning process that I've been seeing, it has to stop, I'm not kidding. Like, like, we don't have funds like that to just keep allocating and changing and switching. If you wanna build a project, and this, this is why I was very critical when I first came on here. This place has been able to build multi-billion dollar big buildings, but we can't, for some reason we struggle with, with just our housing problem, I don't get it. I just don't, I'm sorry, I'm not being disrespectful, I'm saying it in the most respectful way. But, yeah, just the research and every, like, that, the, the, the Net Lake Store project, I did not know that. It was quoted at four million, and then it blew into twelve million. Like, that, that, if I would've did that, I would've been fired right on the, right on the spot. But that's all I'm gonna say, that's, cause I just, I'm just worried, like I said, the, and what I mentioned about our band members who are three or four years old right, right now, that I have kids. I don't want them absorbing all of these decaying buildings in twenty years, and then they have to pay, oh, we're still paying on this building, like, or the, the renovation of it. I mean, I wanna, I wanna see projects that are really gonna generate some sort of positive outlook for us, billable services, stuff, projects that are gonna, that are gonna sustain themselves, self-sustainability, that's what I wanna see, I'm sorry, that's, that's, I'm gonna end.
Yeah Perry, um, it's very frustrating for us sitting here, um, when these projects balloon. Right now even, we're, we're struggling because um we have homes that need repair, and they're coming in very high with like two hundred thousand dollars just to repair a home, where before home costs weren't that much, but it costs over four hundred thousand dollars now to build a house. And that's, that's outrageous, but I mean, that's, that's the way it is today. And um, like Carol with her housing project now, um, since we, we did the initial project, uh, what was that, three years ago? Four years ago? We've applied three years in a row, this is our fourth year applying for the funding, and it has been changing every year. And last year, we did apply and we did not receive the funding, so they didn't have to use that one point eight million, but they hung on to it on the ARPA for this application, not realizing that that was gonna go up. There is some contingency built in this application grant as well. So if, if costs go up, there's a contingency, usually we do the five and ten percent. So there is a little cushion there. And you, you have to do that with a construction project. Any construction project.
So my understanding then is that with that, if we're gonna reallocate this monies, and then so that we don't have to worry about the deadline of December, and that, and if the program doesn't go through, this money doesn't go through, that would be extra money that would be back, put back into the pot of money that we need to decide what we're gonna do with that.
It's, it's set aside for that, you know, cause um, uh, for the last couple of meetings that we've had, you know, how, the housing, you know, and one of the very first priorities of the tribal council was the elder housing. And we've been trying to get um grant matches. One of the problems with the whole grant application process is the length of, when you apply for a grant to, by the time they award it, and then you do the environmentals, and then you start doing the design and build out, you know, it's, it's between two and three years. So like at the architects, what do they, they, they do a probable cost, and they, they have, they have a company, they use their databases on, you know, so, so like they updated the price of this project as of like August of twenty-four. But in reality, by the time it gets awarded and all the designs go, it'll probably be the spring of twenty-six when they build. And what's happened between there, you know, it's, it's, it's challenging. And then because of the pandemic, they've really upped the contingencies in them, because they knew of inflation early on.
And, and most funding agencies will ask you to put in a contingency for that, because they know too that prices are increasing, and they don't want, they don't wanna fund a project, and then a year later, it's starting to get billed, and then they, you don't have enough money for it. So they do require contingency built into that.
And then on some projects too, there's a new federal law that came out about, what, about two years ago? It's called Buy American, Build American. And if you're subject to that, everything, all the supplies and everything have to be American made. You can't get like foreign steel or, you know, so that's driving up costs too. And so you gotta be really conscious of when you're, you know, even getting your price estimates, if that project's subject to that law.
Now, if we get this, to say this project is funded, you know, and we're gonna build a new elder housing, is it gonna be able to, we put it into the one oh five L program?
Based, it, there might be a slight possibility, um, but most likely not, because it's a HUD project and it's just elder housing. There might be an argument around community health. I'm hoping Jeff will help it, you know, because there's like, it's not like a service provided facility, you know, it's just individual elder housing. But there might be some argument there. We've talked about it over the times, and maybe Jeff wants to.
I think this is where um there's sort of a, you know, we've talked about the agencies not having.
not having really clear guidelines for the 105L process, and that, that bleeds into not really having clear guidelines in terms of use of the 105L lease funds. I mean, I, my position is, you know, when the agency's not telling a sovereign nation that there are restrictions on the use of funds, then the tribe has, you know, pursuant to its own sovereignty, the discretion to use them, you know, as it sees fit. I think we want to be careful about making sure we're in compliance, but I think we need to have a more detailed discussion about, you know, potential use of the 105L funds, because I do think there are opportunities to use them beyond, you know, just straight facility costs for the exact IHS and BIA facilities that we're getting the funds for. So I do think that's a possibility, Shane, and I think it's somewhat of a gray area, so I think we need to look into it in detail, because you all need to know, you know, what, what the funds can and can't be used for in order to make the best decision.
I think one of Shane's question was, is would we be able to negotiate a lease for these buildings once it was put into service? And we've talked about it, and we've talked about it on a community health standpoint being that, because it's a community health issue when there's multiple families housed in a house, you know, and it's just healthier to have some space and stuff like that. And it's kind of one of, like he said, iffy, and so like, some of them are real, like the DNR building that we're building, that's real clear cut, that's a, right in the, in the compact, you know? So that one's easy to say, yeah, we can go after that. This one, I'm, you know, it depends on how, how creative we're gonna get.
Yeah, one way to look at it too, and thinking about elder housing, you know, the, the agencies for 105L leasing have sort of this default rule that they tend to not fund housing units for 105L leasing. Where that changes though, is if the housing moves into more of a supporting housing, supportive housing model, and that you could see that in the context of elder housing potentially as well, where there's programs and services built up around the housing, and that might, you know, provide the band with a better argument that it's 105L lease eligible. So it's definitely something worth, worth considering.
I, I do think that we as a band should be looking at anything other than BIA or specific HHS. Any buildings that we're doing, we should always try to insert that 105L component in it, a requirement for any housing, especially if it's elder, or like single family, after you turn 18, if we ever build that apartment complex that you were talking about years ago, or whatever, if we ever do that, because those are most vulnerable, you know? So we should, even though we can't require that to be 105L, always be thinking about that 105L piece in there. One, even put an office in there, if it's a, you know, if it's a apartment complex or any kind of thing outside of BIA and HHS that we're building, because I think that's what we constantly need to think about, because then we can be providing services to that building, and I think we need to push for 105L to be required in all tribal housing. I think as all, all tribes in Minnesota should get together and, and push for that. All tribes in the nation really, because we take care of our own. You know, that's, that's one of our big teachings, so, and the nation doesn't know that, you know, the nation doesn't follow that. So I think that's one thing that, that we should be pushing for is 105L. And I don't know if everybody knows what 105L is, but for our CHRs, I also think that we need to push for a lot more services through HHS that are more of a, what do you call that, like, shoot, I always forget that, that home health aid, or that C, CNA, CNA services for our elders? So then we can, then we can have that 105L piece in there in elder housing, you know? Okay, get off the soapbox, I'm done.
Well, very good discussions and very important, and we've really, we're one of the more advanced tribes pursuing the 105L, but we've still got a lot to learn yet. And so we've been, when we talk about it, we're, we're always throwing, hey, do you think we could go with this angle here and that angle there? So we've been really trying to do that. But going back to the government services allocation, reallocation resolution, that, that allows us time to figure out some things and not have to have that deadline of December 31st, 2024 of having contracts signed. But you can still pursue your priority projects.
Okay, any questions regarding the government service expenditure resolution? Do we need an amount in that resolution, Kim?
Um, I didn't have it, it's in Exhibit A.
Okay.
But I think we have to insert some stuff, because it's kind of a moving target too, and I didn't get back to talk to Jeff about it. Like, as I figured out, as of August 31st, it's 6,935,303.24 that we have to reallocate.
Okay.
And, you know, and I said, I wanted to make the distinction, part of it's for approved projects, and some is unb, you know, unbudgeted. But like, today, it even, this amount even changed, because I had 80,000 on my spreadsheet for the docs, and there's 72,000. So now, there's another 8,000, you know, it's, it's gonna be moving for a little bit.
So we won't put an amount in there? I don't think we should, because you've got to recalculate that.
Yeah. And there'll be some that might need to be redone, and like, I don't think we have any other grant matches that were going on right now, because our last big ones was Jalen got a lot of money for the Heritage Center, and so we had to move those expenses out, so.
Kim, Kim, I have a question. I'm, I'm getting confused here, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
Oh, that's all right.
Trying to follow, but it's like, oh my gosh. According to your ARPA sheet, it's 3.9, correct?
No.
3.9.
There's two parts to it.
But, no, wait, no. How much is the ARPA funds as of 2024 that we need to put in general government, into the government services resolution, and then can we determine later what that dollar amount will be?
Okay, the amount as of August 31st, 2024 is the hot pink one on the third sheet.
Hot pink?
At the top, the 6,935,000.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you, okay.
And that's why I was trying to explain, there's two parts for the projects you've already approved, and part that you don't have budgeted, because, you know, and if things will change, it's guaranteed, you know, so like, if, if something doesn't happen with the elder housing, and you guys decide to do something, you can also, we can also earmark that, you know, to be set aside for a grant match for, for elder housing, and tell whenever you get funds too. You don't, you know, so it's get rid of that December deadline.
Okay, on this second sheet.
Yep.
You went through and reclassed a bunch of stuff.
That's where I've identified, I haven't.
You haven't done this yet?
Nope, you guys wanted to know what we were reclass.
Okay, all right, thank you, that, that, I'm gonna put that sheet aside, because that sheet's confusing me.
Yep, no, that was the Exhibit A that had to be submitted with the, in the resolution.
Okay, so with the government services resolution, it's 6,935,303.24, that's all ARPA?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna reallocate it from ARPA to.
Tribal ARPA.
Tribal ARPA.
Yep. Okay, and thanks for saying that, because I didn't notice that square, because it's dark and, okay.
Yeah, no, and, and I just had it broke out, so you knew. Because I know some, some of you have some projects you'd like to do, so.
Okay.
Just trying to.
Okay.
And I know we've talked about a few different things, so.
Different things that, okay. So, moving on here, okay, now that I understand. Do we have a, any other questions on the general services? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 23, 2025, allocating, authorizing the allocation of ARPA SLF RF funds for government services expenditures from FY '22 to present? Do we have approval for that resolution?
Move, second.
Moved by Tara, seconded by Shane, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. Yay, we don't have to worry about that timeline. Good job, okay, go ahead, Kim.
Okay, my next item, I believe, is the.
Presentation on.
Presentation on time, budget timelines and updates. I was requested to kind of explain how we got behind and where we're at.
Okay.
So I wrote up a narrative over it, and then I was also asked to ask about if you wanted to, the process of, if you wanted, you know, look at budgets and stuff.
Yep.
And what you can look at and can't, so. I'll read my timeline basically, and where we've gotten behind at, and then I have a presentation that, on the data privacy ordinance that Jeff had done for tribal council a couple of years ago, so you can see what data's, you know, can, how you go and do that. But first of all, as of all the other departments, we've had the challenges with staffing. A lot of people retiring pre-COVID with lots of years of experience, and then trying to fill those positions and stuff, so. So the fiscal year 2020 budget is where we really started to fall behind. In the fall of 2019, we did start working on the budgets, and a lot of the staff in the accounting department had long tenures, started to retire, you know, prior, prior to that. And then we had new people in senior management positions, which added to the struggle. With that, the same time there had, this put the budgets behind, and we were never fully finished, so it started in, for the fiscal year 2020. And then during that fiscal year, COVID hit, and everyone's focus significantly changed from day-to-day work to the response and trying to get set up and work through the, you know, people working remotely and, and stuff. Then in '21, the accounting staff still continued to slip behind and get additional workloads. There was a lot of new programs, and the reporting requirements for programs have changed a lot over these four years, which requires a lot more time and documentation from accounting. Some of the programs that were designed required a lot of check processing, as there were direct payments to band members for assistance, and a lot of ordering for like the safe shelter. Those took a lot of work from many people, not just accounting. And in the spring of '21, the federal government rolled out ARPA. In '22 to '23, accounting is built, you know, accounting is all built on prior period work, so you, you can do so much, but you can't do like closeouts till you get everything done, and go on to the next year. So, so accounting is building on prior periods, so we were behind many programs arriving with the new projects. We pursued a lot of funds, and then like, we spent a lot of time getting a lot of money in for like the 105L. You know, there was no time, a lot of catch-up. As we were focusing and getting, focusing on getting audits processed, during the fiscal year, the CARES Act in '22 had to be finalized, and '20, and ARPA was rolling out. In ARPA, there was the direct allocation to the tribes, there was allocations to agencies that you could pursue grants to, and then the state of Minnesota had their ARPA funds. And also, we were very fortunate, and the state of Minnesota had big surpluses, so they had a lot more grants compared to other states that aren't very supportive of tribes. You know, you're very fortunate to have that resource for right now, can change in election years coming up. It was difficult, then we had difficulty staffing with people changing. We did not grow with the organization. There was staffing changes at senior management level, so like, when we get a new senior management person, we have to like, take a lot of time and work with them on budgets and their programs. Like, when we, HHS is the biggest one, and they have over half our grants, and we have about 400 grants on the books, so like 200, you know, and they have to know all the, all the rules in and out, and, so we have to teach that. But during this time, accounting had an assessment done, CLA, and when we participated in the native governance project for the pilot finance project, and they did an assessment for us, and they made some recommendations. So we added program accountant, we added a comptroller, and we added a procurement contracts manager, which spread out the workload. And, and then the biggest thing is the new finance system. Our system does require a lot of manual work and calculations, and so we're upgrading, you know, so the upgrade will help with this problem. So during '24, you know, getting to where we're at, this is just on budgets, we're still struggling with budgets. During this fiscal year, the accounting department was able to hire a program, additional program accountants, a contracts procurement manager, and a comptroller to be able to grow with the additional workloads over the past four years. Much progress was made on department budgets, but the whole process is not complete yet. Boysford has researched and selected the new, began work on the new conversion of the software system. We had our kickoff meeting last week, we have new updated dates. So on how the budget process works is, each year, the accounting department makes a template for the departments, because the templates are set up, and then we can actually take and add those templates and have a master overall budget for the tribal council. But if, if someone isn't complete, we don't have a complete thing. Then accounting creates a teams budget, since we got teams, I don't know, have we been on teams for two or three years? The budget process really works well, lot more communication, you know, between accounting and the budget managers. Lot more work to be done there, but it's improved, yeah. And so we load the mass, the new budget in midsummer, and then accounting prepares payroll information, because people are paid out, some people are paid out of multiple budgets, so people need to know who they have and where they're being paid out of their percentages of pay and stuff to, to allocate out to their grants, and that was, gets done in late summer. Then senior management is responsible for getting their department budgets prepared, either by the senior management or their delegates, each department does that different. So that's like a bottleneck, like where, when we get someone new, fortunately, you know, getting people up to speed, and then getting their, the departments to complete their budgets is a bottleneck, you know? Not only accounting has big workloads, everybody has big workloads, and just like the council, the number of meetings everybody needs to attend now. And some are great, and some are difficult to get their budgets to be done. We, I do want to give a shout out, there is, the early childhood already got their 2025 budgets done already, without even asking. We uploaded it and they did it, so, you know, there are, everybody's different, so. Prior to COVID, there would be a budget meeting, so each department does their budgets, and in there, they have the amount that they're requesting from distributions. So, you know, that's a bottleneck, they have to do that so we can bring it forth. And we also used to have, those of you remember when we used to have the one-on-one budget meetings? They're really great, and we're gonna reestablish those this year, because there's just a lot of great dialogue, and you find out problems, and you learn, people working with them learn at their bottleneck, you know, their issues, and. working with them were, learn at their bottleneck, you know, their issues, and, and we teach them tricks and tips. The, and so we're going to reestablish that in 2025. I haven't set up the dates for the meetings yet, because we had our kickoff. I was kind of waiting to find out when our weekly meetings for the software project are going to be. So I was available for the soft, you know, those times. So I'm not double booking myself. Once the department budgets are complete, a summary, that should say summary request, that's number six on the second page, is presented to the council for tribal funding. And then the council would, that's where the Fortune Bay distributions would come in. The budgets from teams are then entered into the accounting system. Wow, okay.
Hold on, number six, it says, once the department budgets are completed, a summary request is presented to the council for tribal funding.
Yep.
The council will review and approve.
Yep.
When is the last time that's been done?
Probably '19.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to
Yep.
refute the
Yeah.
the comment that was made at a council meeting that it's been two years.
No, it's
So it's been longer than two years.
Yeah.
It hasn't been
No.
only since I've been here.
No.
Thank you.
Yep. And, and, and then part of that is too, is that, you know, like we're doing that, but we've just been surviving, you know. We've just been trying to get by. The, so then, once the council approves that, if, if, so let's say someone asks for a hundred thousand, and the council says, no, we're only giving you fifty thousand, has to go back to that department, and they have to make their budget adjustments. The budgets, then, from teams that they put on, are then entered into the current accounting system. This is a big bottleneck, because the system is out of date and conflicts when certain steps are done. So there's only certain windows that we can enter the budgets. And then plus, we have additional staff. So we have that many more people doing things on, on the system. So we have bottlenecks where the system does lock up, where we have to say, hey, can you get off? So I can, can you get out of certain files so we can get this budget on? So, and then the team, the accounting team came up with this with themselves. In teams, once they enter a budget, they make a note on the tab in teams that it's been entered. And then if someone has a budget update, they need to email the program accountant. So that's, worked on that. So also, at the same time, Fortune Bay works on their budget concurrently, and then the tribal council sets the amount for distribution. Their payment can vary, and depending on their funds and amounts. And historically, usually the amounts programs request, you know, because it almost became a wish list at one time, usually it far exceeds the distribution. So one of the things I was asked was the impacts of uncomplete budgets is makes decisions difficult if tribal funds are needed. Difficult for program managers and managers of their budgets, because we don't have information for them. We do give them printouts. It just doesn't have, you know, we have the, in there, they have to add the, they have to look at their budget on teams and that, if it's not on there. It does foster mistrust amongst people. It weakens internal controls, and it creates more work for closing out grants if programs is, are over or underspent. It's gotten a lot better. I would say currently, just before June, we probably had 80% of the budgets on the system. But then now with the state, all their grants in June, you know, now we got to, that dropped again, you know, we're getting those up and going. And then the people who also have June 30th grants, they have their 2025 budgets done. But I just know that the early childhood had done their whole department and stuff. So progress, you know, I estimate there's about 85% of the budgets are completed in teams. There's about 60% of the budgets are entered on the AS400, varies depending on the month. And we are still working on completing 2024 budgets. So our plan to catch up is, the budget teams are already loaded in teams, and the payroll information for 2025 information is there. We're going to set firm deadlines. We're going to reestablish the meetings. It'll probably be spill into October. Like I said, I'm waiting for some of those dates for those meetings.
I got to comment on that, reestablishing the individual budget meetings.
Yep.
That's one thing that I was like on you about, you know?
It just comes down to time.
Yeah. I know it takes a lot of time and effort with accounting in each department to, to comply and plan and meet. But it helps, because at the end of that appointment time, which is what, one hour or two hours for each department?
Uh huh.
That's even a minimum. That's a minimum amount of time.
Yeah, usually, smaller departments get about two hours.
Mm-hmm.
You know, medium-sized get four. But like when you get to health, it's like three days solid, you know. It's a lot.
And that's what I had said was, for a, for a certain department, the senior management team member or director should always be there, and then the subsequent managers should be there, saying exactly what their budgets are. If they're not able to participate, or if they haven't met their deadline on their budget, that director needs to take accountability and do it for them.
Yeah.
And just submit where, where he or she can for each budget line item, because it, it was that manager's job to participate and make their deadline.
Yeah.
So then we can't be, we can't be, we won't be playing catch-up all the time.
Yeah.
So we need to do that, and we need to set that in place. Because it worked back then, when I was a director. I mean, you had me, you know, you made sure that we worked together on that, and we set those budgets, and we had them approved every year. So this is the way it's going to work, and I hope everybody participates.
Yeah. And it really helps to have the managers there, because a manager might have certain goals that they didn't communicate to their thing. And it's not fair to a senior management if you have a lot of programs to put all that on one person.
Especially with some of the grants, they're so restricted.
Yeah.
You know, you can only spend this and this on this. And if the director puts in a certain line item that is not allowed, you know, that is up to that manager to be there with their grant documents, showing what they can spend and what they cannot spend on. Thanks.
Yeah. And then we hope, you know, then we're going to come back with a, in October, with the list of tribal requests, you know, for funding, and have the council actually go back to the formal approval. And then we're going to try to get, you know, we're going to enter as we can to do that. And to accomplish that, we need to fill our vacancies too. We have two, we're back to, two, I think we're two vacancies, but we have other, you know, some other challenges that had crept up too. So, and, you know, the staff, our staff is very dedicated and looked very hard to, to do it. But life is happening all around them too. So, so this is where the process for the data privacy and requesting how to look at budgets and what you can look at is. So I have on the, the last pair, the last section I have is the Data Privacy Act, what can be viewed and how to request it. So the Data Privacy Act protects various types of information on various levels of restrictions. And I have this flowchart that Jeff had made about two years ago. And I'll share it so people can see it. A, you know, so a request gets made to the Secretary-Treasurer, and upon approval, an appointment will be scheduled. And so then I have, you guys have the spreadsheet. So I need to be able to share. I know I'm not that exciting, but I drove, I just see this bass. I need to be able to share. I'm a participant, and I need to be able to share my screen. Well, it's, it's dry. A lot of people don't. I just need to be able to be a presenter.
You should be good.
I can hold my sheets up in front of the camera.
Kim. Hello.
Okay.
You should be good.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay. So this is, I know the council has it there. It doesn't help much for the audience people unless you're logged into the meeting, but I'm sharing for those remotely. So this is from Jeff now. So what kinds of data does Boysport have? This is, you know, Boysport has government data, gaming regulatory data, business enterprise data, and tribal court data. Data can be unprotected public information, partially protected member information, or protected private information. So there's three levels. And then, so then we have an ordinance, you know, kind of behind here. We'll kind of go through it. So who can access the data? Anyone can access unprotected public information. Any band member can access partially protected information. And the subject of the data can, that, the data can access protected private information. The subject of data, and this is from Jeff's, access protected private information and/or authorize the release of their own data. So, oh, the person who it's about can authorize, you know. So we have some contracts that are protected data, but if the company, you know, let's say, says it can be shared, you know, they can sign a, release it. How does someone request access? A person must submit a written request to the RTC of any government or gaming regulatory, for any government or gaming regulatory data. A person must submit a written request to the manager of the enterprise or the business type, or a person must submit a written request to the clerk of the tribal court. So government data comes to the tribal council. And I'm not, I've never had no, I've never asked this question. So I, for the enterprises, they go to the manager of the enterprises, I'm assuming? Yep. And then for court data, it goes to the, out to the courts. How does the band respond to the request for the data? The person receiving the request must make the materials available within five business days. We have to check the ordinance for rules about regarding copying of data. And the tribal court has jurisdiction to adjudicate any disputes that arise under, under this policy. I should be scrolling down as I read. So then, some, here's some scenarios about different things. So data provided in the course of employment duties. So RTC members, band employees, and contractors can access data regardless of the classification if the data is reasonably needed to carry out such a person's duties. So Miranda in HR needs access to HR-related stuff, or her staff, you know, even though it's protected, you know, stuff like that. Data privacy, data provided to the federal government. The tribal government, band enterprises, and tribal court have the discretion to provide federal government, government agencies with data where the data does not identify particular individuals, and if the disclosure is legally required and serves the interest of the band. So it might be reporting on certain contracts, outcomes, stuff like that. Data provided to the police. The RTC, business enterprises, and the tribal courts have discretion to provide federal, state, or tribal police officers with otherwise protected information for the sole purposes of assisting with the investigation of a crime. And RTC designation and disclosure, disclosure of data. The RTC may, by formal resolution, designate information as unprotected or partially protected information and disclose it under the restricts it deems appropriate. So you might, as a whole, say, okay. So like, the ARPA budget I did a meeting ago, if, if it was more specific or something, you know, or it's kind of protect, band member protected information. But it was requested, I put it on there. So you, by allowing it to be on the agenda, deemed it okay to be public information, you know, at that time. So there's some classifications here for some stuff. So we'll talk about government data. Unprotected public information for government, it's the band constitution and its bylaws. Duly enacted ordinances, laws, and regulations, names of duly elected RTC members, vote tallies in regular or special elections, names of band members, data is required by law to be publicly posted, and agreements, contracts, and compacts between the band and other governments. Now, in the next column over, where it says partially protected information, I have highlighted the yellow, because this is an older presentation. You guys have made a change to the, the data privacy. So minutes of the general council meetings are unprotected public information now. So the other partially protected information is proposed resolutions, ordinances, laws, and regulations that were vote, voted on by the RTC. Land description, title, status reports, and leases, signed loan documents. I have the annual budget, government budget, audit, and budget. In aggregate, you can see it, but when it gets down to specifics, and it might identify specific stuff, it's not allowable. So like, if you come in to ask about a specific budget, and you can identify people's salaries in there, that's, that's not allowed. So you can get budgets in aggregate, but not, not detailed. Audit, you know, I, people have come in to re, and review the audit. And then signed contracts between federal and state agencies, but not contracts of like individual contractors. So protected private information, you know, government, for government data is personnel material, signed contracts with private individuals and entities, and all other data that's not unprotected or partially protected. So that's for the government. I don't know if you want me to walk through the gaming and business imports or not. Go ahead.
Quickly.
Yeah, I'm trying. I know, I opened a can of pop, so I could keep talking. Gaming regulatory data, you know, gaming regulations and formal operating procedures, and written orders or decisions of the RTC in the capacity of a gaming regulatory authority are unprotected public information. And then they don't have any partially protected, but they have protected, you know, they have all other data, not unprotected, but RTC may transmit regulatory data to NIGC as authorized by federal law. So that's the regulatory in data. And then they have the business enterprises. You have the names of the management of, so what's unprotected public. Duly adopted mix, which is the minimal internal control standards. Formal written policies and procedures that are distributed to employees, that's unprotected. Partially protected information is annual audits and budgets. And business enterprise data that is protect, private protected is financial Protect, private protected is financial records. Other than annual audits and budgets, all other data is not, that is not unprotected or partially protected. But Fortune Bay general manager may provide information for incident investigations to law enforcement and courts. And then tribal court has two classes of data. Unprotected public information. So complaints, motions, written orders, decisions, and dispositions. And name of judges and judicials employees is unprotected public information. And then the protected information is all data involving minors.
Okay, any, any questions for Kim on that?
I think there's protected information you just shared.
Kidding. Okay, well, seeing none, thank you, Kim, for that. You know, it does take a lot of time, but, you know, these are questions that are being posed, so I appreciate all the work that you did with that. Now we will go on to audit timelines and update.
It's, it's long because I had done the audit timeline before. And I just was gonna highlight the.
Okay.
Shoot.
Yep, you can highlight.
It didn't, when I printed it out, it didn't all go onto one sheet. So I gotta. Gotta get my tape and glue out, grab. So with the audit, a lot of it corresponds to the same barrier, you know, stuff like that. So, so the biggest thing was in the summer of 2019, we did. We. The biggest thing, well, the 2018 audit was completed in the summer of 19. So we have nine months to complete an audit for governmental purposes. So that was the last.
That's considered on time.
Yep. And so what happened then in the summer of 19, we switched auditing firms, which is a big undertaking because you've got to get. So we had finished the 18 audit. We switched. You've got to get to know your auditors. They have to transfer files. They have to do a lot of work with previous auditors because they have to get their work papers and roll over, and they have to load their data into their systems. So then that's when we switched to Scheck or Doc and Canter, which I'll refer to as SDK. And so then they, they were engaged to do the 19 audit, which would have been due. June of 2020. And so. With the transition and their schedules, we're being a new client. They were scheduled to come on site to do fieldwork because at that time, the auditors still came on site. So they came the week of the third through the fifth. First time meeting them in person and starting to work with them. On March 13th, we started having, during that time period, like their firm stopped all travel. You know, they couldn't go, they had to get up to speed too because they weren't going on site, you know, it was the beginning of the pandemic. And on March 13th, we began our weekly Turk meetings to response to COVID. And so that already put us behind, you know, disrupted. They're trying to figure out, get their, their equipment in place and stuff. So then moving on, we didn't have our first case of COVID on the reservation till August of 2020. And if you, those that were here remember how we scrambled, then we even sent more people home. And so we got behind schedules. But along in that, in that time, you know, we were getting the CHAP program, which was the COVID Housing Assistance Program, which a lot of people were struggling. So there was a lot of applications. And in that program, we were a processing site. So we were also processing for the state for non-natives too. They, they weren't cutting into our, our funds, but we had, you know, if they applied and they got assigned to us, those workers had to work with them, and then we had to cut the checks and do the reporting. We had started the safe shelter program. This is all about September of 2020. And we didn't have the 2019 audit done. And then we also, if you remember too, we did the, we bought the green rice for the mental health project, and we sent rice home, how much work that took and, you know. Staffing, we had people from accounting helping out. We had to go out and buy rice. We had people helping package, you know. Our extra workers that we had gotten for COVID were in here helping package. I remember how many in the audience, there's people climbing on big piles of boxes. So that's where that's at. So then in. Then we had. We had COVID relief programs, you know, we had done direct payments. Those take, there was an application process, and then we had to process them. So we were constantly processing checks. April. Or in April. Of 21, we had, we had a retirement of a program accountant and the first round of Emergency Rental Assistance Program rolled out. And that one was designed by the federal government, and there was a lot of rules around it. And getting staff, we had to, there was a lot of checks we cut for that too, that paid for rent, utilities, internet. You had to apply.
Here's where you can plug, that there are some people out there that haven't taken advantage of that.
Yeah. Well, though, yeah, there's, they didn't take advantage of those programs, but they have the FHPP if you live in Minnesota. Reach out to them. And get assistance. There is still a lot of help. Jane Lorenz even said there was a lot of supportive housing dollars out there right now. Please take advantage of it. Yeah. And so. Then in, trying to match up my line items. So we got a countdown. And then we submitted. And we were still working on the. 2019, so we're into the June of 21, and we still haven't finished the 19 audit. You know, so we're really, we're still really struggling. Then ARPA rolls around in that timeframe too. And then we had two big ARPA payments come out. Economic Assistance Payments. The first round was you had to apply for. The second round was. The 1,800, if you already applied for it, we had to go back and reissue checks. And so now they're combined, which I'm gonna stop and make a plug for. We're getting, that program was designed to run through September 30th, 2024. You have to apply for it. Applying for it's easy. We're doing a direct mailing to the people who did not apply for it. We've already identified them. We have the postcard designed, so probably tomorrow, we're gonna try to get it printed today, but we just, not enough time. We'll do the direct mailing to them. It has, it goes through then. So there's 467 band members that we identified that did not take advantage of it. There's, there's, there's certain people will never apply for assistance programs. There's some of those in there that you, because we're kind of looking through it. There was, you can identify people who are in. Either nursing homes or. Care centers that, you know, can't have extra money. They haven't applied, you know. So there was kind of some things. And then there's the people who we don't have contact to, either, you know. But we're doing a direct mailing, trying to get it out. So that's there. So we did finally. Moving along, you know, we had those, we had some more retirements. So in June 14th of 2023, we finally, I missed where we got the 19 audit submitted, somewhere in there. But in. In June of 23, we finished the 2020 audit. And then June of 24, we. Finished the 21 audit, and our goal is to have. The 2021 done by December. So there's some challenges there. Some, you know, big challenges. There's numerous programs that came out. During those times and right now. You know, like we had, we had challenges, like the insurance canceled our insurance because of the hemp products being sold at Fortune Bay, so that took time. We did have some people start, you know, staff. So we were able to spread it out. The office of, we had a headset review. We had a HUD review. We've done a lot of work with. We've really focused a lot on BIA end-of-year funds, the 105L. So those all take our time too. And then we rolled out the homeowner. Assistance fund. So to catch up. One of the things was is. What we needed, and then, so council hired Whitley to help catch up. But it almost takes a full-time person to work with them one-on-one, you know. Someone has to be dedicated, giving them information all the time. We are working with them. CLA is another auditing firm. We've engaged with them. They have. There's new GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standard Board Regulations that came out. So we have to do this, lease accounting has changed. And so we have to assess all our housing leases, all our realty leases. We have to assess our building leases, you know, as a lease or and a leasing, you know, might be a build, you know. There's a lot of stuff like that. That has to be done, and that's, we have about a six-week timeframe. We're working on that. With that, with the fiscal year '22 indirect cost proposal has been submitted. We've got about six weeks about till they start negotiating that. And in that meantime, I'm about half done with '23. So if I get '23 in, they'll negotiate both of them at the same time. We've hired a controller, a controller, excuse me. So Whitley is working on the fund balance roll forward verification. Auditors are gonna open their share, their share file where we can start uploading bank recs on about September 15th. September 30th, they wanted the schedule of federal assistance, which is called the CIFA schedule. And that's how they determine what the major programs they're gonna test in, in that. And then the auditor, then they're gonna do fixed asset testing immediately because that's the last thing they've finished on the 21 audit. And so it's, well, it's fresh, how ours work, they're gonna do that. Then the trial balance is due. I think mid-October, and then they'll get us the field work and selection testing. And they'll start their field work in November and December. And our goal is to have '22 done by. December 31st, and then six months for '23 and six months for '24. Yeah. Because you can't, you have to be able to roll over the balances. See, like they can't even open up the share site till they roll over their balances on their side so we can upload stuff. Goes both ways, so. And it has to fit in, you know, to their client's schedule too.
Any questions on the audits? Nope. Good presentation, Kim. I'm gonna gitch for that.
Yep.
Okay, next we have authorization for bank functions for Vanessa Little and Erin Morrison.
So as we're growing and spreading out, we got a comptroller and Erin to do stuff. I'd like to, we're not authorized signer on our bank accounts, but we can call, like I can call and ask questions, and I can transfer online money from one bank account to need it. So like electronically, all our money comes into a savings account. And then as it's needed, we might transfer it to the general checking or to the payroll checking. And we can work with on setting up wires, you know. We can't, we can't take any money out of our accounts at all without the dual signatures. But they need to have authorization to ask questions as we kind of transition roles with everybody. So that's what I would like to have in our banks. Our, our main bank is Park State Bank. We have money at what was formerly the First National Bank of U. It's now B2B. Wells Fargo, we have a PayPal account. We have Northern State Bank and Aurora. The US Bank, that's where our investments are, and the Embarrassed Federal Credit Union.
Any questions for Kim on the authorization for the bank functions? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve.
I have just one, one quick little question here. It says transactions to make internal bank transfers. Is there a set limit on that, or how do you? Okay.
No, so, so like, I'll use an example for per capita. It came into our savings account. And when, when we cut the checks as we needed, you know, we'd move, we'd move maybe like, the first chunk was a million, then I did a million and a half. Kind of watch it and move it as needed.
Okay, and then Kathy and I will still do, have to authorize the automatic payments and wires. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Can I call for a motion to approve the authorization for bank functions for Vanessa Little and Erin Morrison? Move by Tara. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Perry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, silent, motion carried. Okay, good job. Kim, next. Authorization to become a member of NAFOA.
NAFOA is Native American Financial Officers Association. It's a great resource. It's a community of Native American. It's tribal and gaming and enterprises. And it's an excellent resource. It's a flat $5,000 a year membership, but you get a lot of resources and connections. And I believe some staff, I think some council has gone to NAFOA out at Connecticut. And then we have some, two that are possibly going. It's in San Diego this fall that are going. But you can get access to help advertise, you know, you can get networks to post jobs, like if you're looking for. Financial positions. You get resources on connections, networking. You can get job descriptions, all kinds of stuff. It's been, it's been probably 20-some years since I've been to a conference. So someone who's went more recently can probably attest to what they've.
Yeah, we were invited to. To this conference when we were under that finance project that, and they paid for it, which is nice.
Yeah.
But I think 5,000 a year would be, would be helpful with all the resources that we will be getting from them. And then having some accounting and council attending every year. Because I looked at their agenda and it's really good this year. Especially ARPA's in there, closeouts and all that kind of stuff is in there, so.
And so like with the new GASB rule changes too, to get some in, because like for '22, it's the, the lease accounting. '23, it's software as a service, accounting for software's changes. And then in, starting after '25 and '26, there's new rules about compensated absences accounting and charging it to grants and stuff like, it's, it's changing, there's changing requirements.
I just, I really think that this is a good idea because of all the resources that we do get. But also we're revamping, you know, finance and accounting. We're restructuring. We're putting more of an emphasis. With your presentation, we're trying to be a lot more open and. Teaching people how and what we're doing and why we're doing things a certain way. We're bringing technology back to accounting and systems. So I think that having a NAFOA membership would, would help us in that effect. Thanks.
Second. Second.
And, and Fortune Bay, it's to do with Fortune Bay, it's their, um, and, um, I put it on because we needed to get the, at least get this authorized, this doesn't have the contracts for the actual work, Randy, Randy will have the, that after, you know, when he gets his contracts ready to, to do it, but it's the, um, access wire points, um, there was three parts to it. Cabling and switching of the IT equipment at the Fortune Bay and Resort.
Bringing it up to.
Yeah.
Bringing it up to date.
And it's not to exceed $300,000 and it's out of this ARPA SL, FRF fund.
We just allocate that though, so.
We've had it earmarked, but we didn't do the actual resolution, yeah.
So we moved the money and now.
No, I, I didn't count that in there, I had counted this to stay in ARPA. On the spreadsheet here, yeah. No, I, I knew what was on there, I was trying to get it as close as, yeah. No, I didn't move this one out, this stays in ARPA.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2025 for the authorizing the use of ARPA SL FRF funds for the improvement of IT infrastructure at Fortune Bay in the amount of $300,000, not to exceed?
Move.
Move by Robert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried. Good job, Kim. Good. Thank you so much for your presentation and keep up the good work, Megwich.
I would ask if you could take like a five-minute recess?
Yeah. Five-minute recess right now. We will return at 11, well, noon.
I'll, I'll rise.